Commissioner's Court, Brazos County, will be in session on March 22nd, 2016, 10:00 AM, in Commissioner's courtroom, County Administration Building, 200 South Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is invocation of alleged allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag, Captain J. Jones and Commissioner Collins Lee.
Your Honor, I want to thank you for this day, this is the day that you have made it. You're honored to rejoice and be happy in it. Thank you for letting us be in a country free of religion, free of speech. There's no other country like America, even though America has our problems. Pray for our county sheriffs or county commissioners, perhaps county courthouse families. Pray for those that are sick and ill, who may have lost loved ones. Pray for Texas, pray for America, those up there watching DC that they crossed the highway and weren't together for the betterment of this country. Your Honor, we pray for our troops, pray for all of our law enforcement officers who lie in their deputy, each day now, but protect each of us for Rotherford. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, and everybody says amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored protection of my right. I pledge allegiance to Dean Texas, one nation under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Captain Jones, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and/or concerns. Here you are, we'll proceed to take action on Agenda 3323. An approval about state travel for jail officials, Ray Wayne Digby, to attend the large jail network in Aurora, Chicago, state travel on March 20 through 23rd, 2016. Motion made secondly, discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed. Number four is a question. Sheriff's Office for State Travel for Investigator Terry Young to attend training in Maryland during the period of April 10th through 15th, 2016.
Second.
Motion made secondly, discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed. Number four carries five seconds of donated awarded property donation of unclaimed clothing and miscellaneous property left by inmates leaving Brazos County.
Number four, Brooks.
Second.
Motion made secondly, discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed. Number four carries number six, bringing the final judgment, Civil Action Number 415-CV00786. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made secondly, discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed. Number four carries. Number seven, Resolution 16-007, amending authorized representative with Texas. The Treasurer's Office wishes to add Angie Beard as an authorized representative. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made secondly, discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed. Number four carries, number eight, approval of following job descriptions. A, Transition Training, Class Code 0213, Position 2 for County Judge. B, Sponsorship Coordinator, Class Code 0861, Position 1 for Exposition Complex. And C, Administrative Service Manager, Class Code 1855, Position 1 for Juvenile Services. And I think we need to remove B from that consideration. Some change that we could connect in. So it would just be A and C. I move for approval, B and C.
Second.
Motion made secondly, discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed. Number four carries. I have a request from Information Technology Department to approve contract with TRITEC in Farm Records Management System. This new contract rescinds and replaces the contract with Tiburon Total Enforcement Records Management System, approved in Commissioner's Court, May 12th, 2015.
Number four, Brooks.
motion made secondly. Eric, you want to give us kind of an update on?
Back in 2004, City of Bryan went out and picked up a dispatching system and a records management system known as Tiburon. Tiburon CAD is how we refer to it. And then, 10 years ago, in 2006, they implemented the records management portion of that solution. And when they first acquired it, they acquired a multi-agency license that allowed multiple agencies to participate on that same software. And so Brazos County wound up taking advantage of that and have since been dispatched with that CAD system and have been using the mobile system in the patrol vehicles for a number of years now. And so from 2006, when they implemented the RMS piece, until today, we've been, we, City of Bryan has been upgrading that software and keeping maintenance on it. Brazos County has been paying a portion of the maintenance for that software. In 2014, in contemplating the move to our new justice software, which would not include a records management component, we knew that we needed to do something. So we started talking to City of Bryan. And at that point, the knowledge that the multi-agency license was in place was resurrected. And we realized at that point that we could really be taking advantage of that to get onto a common records management system with the City of Bryan. So we started discussing that possibility with them in earnest and felt like it was a good route to go. And so we were looking at a product that Tiburon was marketing called Total Enforcement. It was a, it was actually a product that we had seen before when we were looking at new justice software. One of the vendors had made a proposal that included the Total Enforcement CAD and RMS piece as a part of their proposal. At that time, we did not elect to go that route and pick up that RMS. It's something that we had already seen. And so Tiburon wound up acquiring that. And so in 2014, when we started talking about this, we were looking then at that Total Enforcement product. Tiburon, in 2015, along with the Total Enforcement product, was acquired by TRITEC. That did not deter us, though. We felt like, you know, just because Tiburon and the Total Enforcement product had been acquired by TRITEC, it was still a good fit. It was still something that both agencies, City of Bryan and Brazos County, should be looking at moving toward. And so in May of 15, we approved, in a local agreement with City of Bryan, to jointly go out and acquire that Total Enforcement product. And we actually signed a contract and we actually started working on that in 2015. And then, subsequent to that contract signing in September of last year, TRITEC informed us that that Total Enforcement product did not, was not going to remain on their roadmap for very long. They had decided at that point that they had other products in their basket that they wanted to invest dollars in, in further development and further marketing. And so we were early enough in the process, we felt like it was time to take a step back and reevaluate the situation. And so again, Brazos County, jointly with the City of Bryan, started looking at the alternative that was proposed by the vendor. And that alternative was the Inform RMS. And so after evaluating that Inform as an alternative, in October of last year, we jointly decided that was the best way to proceed. We actually felt like, for the negotiated contract price, we were going to get an even better product than what we had originally agreed to. So we felt like it was a win-win for us, with the exception that the whole project has now been delayed. And so consequently, when we do move to our new justice software, there's going to be a lapse of time that our law enforcement agencies are not going to have software. And so we've been talking with the Sheriff's Department in particular about how to handle that. And at this point, we feel like the best alternative is for them to manage their records with paper and pencil. It's going to be labor intensive, it's going to be difficult. It's not going to be very unlike what they've been doing all these years, anyway. So we feel like it's a workable solution. Obviously, we don't want to remain on that solution for any longer than we have to. You may remember that proceeding with this process, back in January, Commissioner's Court approved an amended interlocal agreement with the City of Bryan that reflect we are now going to be acquiring the Inform RMS as opposed to Total Enforcement. And so for substance now, we've been negotiating with, along with City of Bryan, with the vendor. And that leads us up to today. And so we have a new contract on court for your consideration this morning. I should note that with this new product offering, it had additional functionality that we had not contemplated when looking at buying the Total Enforcement RMS. And that additional functionality is something that both agencies decided that they wanted to pursue with this new offering. It includes a barcoding, evidence management, intelligence functionality, modules for handling internal affairs, processes, narcotics, and then some analytics and reporting. And so on electing to acquire that additional functionality, there was going to be an additional cost for the licensing for that. And so there is a budget amendment later on the agenda this morning for the additional monies for that additional functionality.
Do you know whether, I mean, I'm pretty sure College Station went to TRITEC, was that who they decided on? Are they looking at the same or they have to emulate, made the same RMS that we're talking about now?
Yes, sir. In fact, they went with more of that Inform product suite than even City of Bryan and Brazos County went with. They wound up picking the computer aided dispatching or CAD system. They wound up picking up fire, jail, and maybe a couple of other things. So they picked up basically the entire suite. And so that brings up another point, which I've mentioned before, with City of College Station being on this solution and with Bryan and Brazos County being on the same solution and already cooperating internally to share access to data where appropriate between City of Bryan and Brazos County. It looks like there, this will create a great opportunity at some point in the future to do that same sort of cooperation and data sharing with City of College Station.
I know that's been a thought for a long time, but, you know, dollars always keep, you know, that in action. So I guess it's, I guess it's a good thing that all this is kind of played out to where TRITEC actually bought out.
Yeah. Right. I think it, I think it was very fortunate. I think the technology piece is now in place, it's just a matter of getting the political mindset right. And probably time, too. With City College Station's larger investment in the CAD system, it may be that they need to spend some time getting back some return on that investment before they want to look at partnering with others, so.
All right. Thank you, Eric. I think we've got a motion in a second. Take the correct one. Give me a discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed. Number four carries. Number ten, approval of contract for Steve Love, or the appraisal of CW Henry Track, 123.6 acres of land located along Long Tresson Road at Naperville. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made secondly, discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed. Number four carries. Number eleven, approval of an upgrade to the current LexisNexis subscription to the Law Library. This upgrade will only change the way patrons are able to log into the site. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made secondly, discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed. Number four carries. Number twelve, award of bid number 2016-152, equipment, Loop, I think that was with Universal Loop. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made secondly, to award that to Universal Loop. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed. Number four carries. Number thirteen, is award of bid number 2016-153, hydrated lime, I think that was with Austin White Lime. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made secondly, discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed. Number four carries. Number fourteen is approval and award contract for RFP number 2016-171, installation of 8,000 gallons of wine per recreational. I move for approval.
Second.
Is that Madison? Madison, okay, that's what I was expecting for. And that's move approval with, for Madison to interrupt some of this, okay. Any more discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed. Number four carries. Number fifteen is renewal of bid contract, 2016-173R, for truck scale maintenance with bareback skate. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made secondly, discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed. Number four carries. Number sixteen is order number 16-002, approving the installation of traffic control signs on Harper's Ferry Road and a portion of Nantucket Drive, site is located in Precinct 1. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made secondly, discussion.
I was reading through the agenda this morning and was reading the order, and it says regulatory signs to be posted with a local statute or ordinance in place prior to the posting of the signage. And I was wondering if anybody knows what local statutes already in place?
No.
So do we have the authority to do this?
I had some questions about it, too. I wasn't sure, even if we put that ordinance in place, I'm not sure who you're going to be able to enforce it.
Well, can you even write ordinances? By the Constitution, the statutes have to give you the power to do it.
Yeah.
As far as I know, we don't have any ordinances or statutory making authority. It's kind of redundant to have it in there, but it, the law is about signs in period, not just county signs. So it also regulates city signs and stuff.
Those are selective exclusion signs and those can be regulated by the homeowners association.
Okay.
Not typically regulated by the county.
And this doesn't say that we could post them even if the HOA?
In the past, homeowners association has purchased the signs.
Mm-hmm.
And county has put up the post.
Is that because it's in our right of way?
Well, and also it's a safety, we've worked, and so.
Health and safety, the sign stays up the way it's supposed to?
We've raised the signs up, but the homeowners association purchased those signs. Well, I haven't got an empty opinion or support, but.
Okay.
51, 155, I think that's.
Yeah. I'll have to review that before I'll pay for any signs. So that's where it'll come up again if y'all approve it today.
I don't know that there's any agreement with the HOA to purchase and to actually pay for the sign, but.
I just wrote down that the HOA will purchase it, so are we?
I don't know that there's.
I don't think that's on the agenda.
Let's just trickle it here with that. I think we've got enough questions that we may alter table list.
Bring it back next week.
I mean, I had awesome questions about, it says, number one, I'm not sure who could enforce it. I don't, I have my doubts about the county being able to enforce it, but I don't know. But if it is, I don't know what the definition of a truck is.
Yeah.
I mean, is it a pickup? Wait, what point does it become a truck?
Three-quarter ton, maybe?
Yeah. Do all the homeowners that own a pickup have to park it if there's entrance and walk in? I don't know. Do they have trash service out there? If it's, you're stopping trucks from coming in, I'm, I feel sure that a trash truck would certainly.
Unless it's coming into the Sudan.
Though there's, there's some questions that we ought to probably.
Address.
Have a little more discussion about. And as you pointed out, it says in the law that based on an ordinance that's already passed, which we're not sure about either, so there are enough questions that I think we probably ought to take off and then get some more discussion about what's the correct direction to go.
Okay.
Well, and I think we got somebody that wanted to speak.
I wanted to speak.
Okay.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. As you're aware, I'm a Nantucket resident, Marie Wolf, and I live in Nantucket. I was here last week explaining to you the safety issues we have. We have children on Harper's Ferry, there's large trucks that go through there. I'm sure if we didn't have surgical problems, one of our president or vice presidents of our homeowners association would have been here today to voice that we'd probably be willing to pay for the signs, that that would not be an issue. It is a definite safety issue in our subdivision. And I believe, I've read the information that Alan Munger had passed out to us, and certainly there is precedence to have no truck signs, local deliveries only. And that's what exactly we were looking for. So basically, to have these huge dump trucks, and they come one after another, it's not like, it's sparse because of the Indian Lake development going on behind us. And just last week, as I left here, we went in the front entrance of Nantucket, an 18-wheeler pulls in behind me, and they go all the way through the development, out the back and to Indian Lakes. So, you know, there are children, we don't have sidewalks, we, I'm a walker, there's been a number of times I've had to jump off of the road, which I don't really appreciate because there's a lot of snakes out there. So, you know, I don't like to get in the weeds, but certainly this is a safety issue for our neighborhood. And I would want you to consider this strongly.
Well, and I don't disagree with you, I'm just not sure who can enforce it. I'm not sure that this, that local, our county law enforcement would be able to enforce it or not. I'm just not sure that they can. And so, I mean, while the homeowners association were willing to pay for it, I think because it's in our right of way, I think Road and Ridge staff could put them up. And so we'd have signs up there. But if the trucks were to happen to continue to go through there, I'm not sure that there's any enforcement authority for the county law enforcement to be able to actually stop them and deal with it. I don't know. I think that, I mean, and I'm okay with this, if we can get an agreement with the homeowners association to purchase the sign, that we take a look at, you know, the county installed it.
Well.
I don't want to promise you that, that we're going to have a sheriff's office out there, or a constable out there, or somebody that's going to be able to do anything about it, I just don't know.
Well, half of the battle is to get a sign. If you believe truck drivers are lawful people and see a sign and will obey it, then there wouldn't be an enforcement issue.
Right.
So, you know.
And that may be all it takes, is to be able to put signs up out there, and maybe they'll find another route to go through.
Well, there's definitely another route.
Yeah, okay.
You know, and a safer route, there aren't children on those routes, there aren't driveways entering on it. I mean, we have people on Harper's Ferry that complain they can't get out on Harper's Ferry because of the traffic. And, you know, this is a little internal neighborhood road that is used as a cut-through because it's the quickest way to get to six, going north or south. Now, we did, you know, the development was designed appropriately to, for the safety of the residents, to have those exits and entrances, and we're being punished for that. That's how I look at it. It's a punishment to have huge trucks coming in and out, and they do. And the development in Indian Lakes is going on. Your next item on the agenda is additional homes in Indian Lakes with still only one entrance and exit for them. I had a chance in 2006 to buy in Indian Lakes or Nantucket, and I chose Nantucket because it seemed easier to get out of. It wasn't as dangerous, it had more entrances and exits for our safety. Those people in Indian Lakes, they have one entrance and exit. God forbid if two 18-wheelers collide, they have no way of getting in and out. So I appreciate you taking this up, and I kind of hope that you would have looked at what Alan Munger had handed out as to, that this is something that can be done in the county, that you did have that right to do. And so if you're going to table it, that's fine. We'll probably bring more people, I have a number of ladies here that are very interested in this. One lives on Harper's Ferry, and she's had two trucks roll over in her ditch because of the speed and the, you know, there's no, there's no side to our road. It's a ditch, so. I appreciate you listening.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for coming in. There still may be an issue about payment of the signs. Again, I think it would be okay since it's in our right of way for Road and Ridge to actually put the signs up. If the homeowners association would decide to pay for them, I don't think that's a problem. Whether, whether the sheriff's office was able to enforce the law, I can't tell you that, I don't know. It's, it'd be a combination of them, the county attorney, you know, taking a look at the law and deciding whether they could actually win a case if they took it, you know, to court.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know that, but I think we can move forward with that. We probably need to table today, but if you can go back to the homeowners association, if they're willing to pay for the signs, I think we can move forward, get signs up.
Does anybody know the cost of the signs?
Road and Ridge, we can give you a little bit of cost of it.
Okay. I'll go talk to the board, and we'll have a position next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I add to that discussion? Okay. Harper's Ferry, Nantucket is an older, established, well-established subdivision. Their driveways come out on Harper's Ferry, and newer designs of subdivisions, if they're, it's an arterial road, that is not the case, where their driveways actually come out and you drive out home, that means road. They are experiencing quite a problem out there, and this is something I feel like we really need to consider. In fact, we've done it before, am I correct? We've done it in Precinct 4 a couple of years ago. And so I think precedent was set on that. And whether it was enforceable or not by whoever, if she says, if she will says, if truck drivers are honest and competent people, then they need to stay out of there. And I just feel like it's something, if we table it today, it's got to come back on the agenda, we need all the answers to the questions. I personally felt those were all addressed already, and that it was okay to do this in my talks and conversations with people. And this is something that's very important to those people. It's really a hazard, it's a cut-through, it's all of the people coming out of Indian Lakes, taking a right on Harper's Ferry, going down to Nantucket Drive, to take a left and get on Highway 6 South in the cheese here because of over-underpass and all of the traffic that we have on 40 and Arrington. This is why we need to look at this very, very strongly, because it is really.
This is why we need to look at this very, very strongly because it, it is really upset out there. It's really, really serious, uh, situation. And, uh, we still don't have a second, second exit out of Indian Lakes. But if, we still just have the one. So, it's something we really need to look at, which will benefit these people. It's an older, uh, it's, it's one of the subdivisions, but it's older, and so that's the reason it's designed the way it is, with their driveways coming out on a major thoroughfare, it's either for them. Thank you.
Okay, alright. But, uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, I guess I would ask that we amend that.
I'll rescind my motion, and, uh, as long as you put it back on the agenda.
It'd be back on. So we've got, I'm gonna, I'm gonna table it till next, I'm wanting it back on the agenda if we find out everything that we need to find out. Okay, so we need to vote on the, the amendment, which would be to table.
You second it, though.
All in favor of the amendment to table the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Okay, all the one, uh, proposal, and then the original motion, and, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Table it till next week. Number seventeen is the final plot of Indian Lakes subdivision. Plays twelve twenty-two. Lots of one through twelve, block thirty-three, one common area, twenty-seven point eight three acres. J M Barrero survey, A sixty-nine College Station ETJ, Brass County, Texas, site located precinct one.
Please approve.
Second. Motion made second again. I think, did, did you want to speak again, Ms. Wolf?
Sorry to be such a pest here this morning. Yes, I would like, I'm sorry, this is Marie Wolf. I live in Nantucket. Um, I, I really want you to think hard about this. I mean, I've lived in Nantucket since two thousand and six. And I know Indian Lakes has probably been there and started in two thousand and four. You constantly approve new plots, and every time you approve a new plot, we have more traffic. Because every house there has at least one round trip out of it a day, on a day. That's what I hear from the city, and so I believe that, just watching the traffic in our neighborhood. It, there, it's dangerous. There, they don't, um, follow the thirty mile an hour zone that we have in our neighborhood. And it's dangerous for them with only one. I, I would ask you to reject this today and not put anything else on the table for Indian Lakes until they have that second exit, until Mesa Verde is extended to six. It's a safety issue probably for them. I'm not sure why they aren't here complaining. But, uh, it's definitely a safety issue for Nantucket. And, uh, it continues to grow exponentially every time you put a new home out there. And I'm, I, by my estimate, there's at least easily four hundred homes there today. So, and I'm sure you have those numbers better than I, but, uh, you know, just by my estimate. They have roads. Mesa Verde is built without any driveway entering onto it. It's built to be a thoroughfare. And I, my understanding is they have, the developer has the land to extend that out to six. And, you know, I would propose that you reject this until that the contract is in place that says that road is extended. I appreciate that.
Okay, well, thank you. I, I will tell you that the county does not have the authority to reject, uh, a subdivision plot that's properly, and, and really doesn't have any, uh, regard to your questions about changes. We can't reject it because of that. I mean, it puts the county in some, I think, some liability. And I, I'm not sure that the developer couldn't just go around and see if we didn't approve it. Because they, they've met all the engineering that's required for that plot. And that's, that's what we have. We kind of have a ministerial duty. We take a look, make sure that they've done their drainage and all that meets the standards.
I'm sure it's all done legally, Your Honor.
And it is, but I'm, I'm just, I want you to understand that I don't, we, I don't, there's, if we reject it, I think it puts the county in liability because it's, everything that they've done is, is properly done, and we don't have a reason. I agree with you that Indian Lakes needs another way out. We are working with the developer, and hopefully we can come up with a solution to get that done. Uh, you know, where they'd have another way out, but that, that's not a reason that we can reject this plot.
Okay. I just want you to be all aware, and every time Indian Lakes will come here, Marie Wolf will be here.
Okay.
And you can say the same thing again and again. But my point is, the safety of our residents should be on, on the table. And I understand legally, it probably is all, all the Ts are crossed and I's dotted. But, you know, there is a safety issue, and, and it's not just for, for Nantucket. Indian Lakes has a serious safety issue. Uh, God forbid, like I said, a fire, eighteen wheelers, anything. They have no other way, in or out. And, you know, there's a lot of homes back there. There's a lot of people that will be impacted.
I agree. We, we are working with the developer, and hopefully there's gonna be a solution that we'll, we'll be able to have a different way out other than trying to come through.
Well, I appreciate that.
Our state government doesn't really give us a lot of runway on what we can do. And that's a sad thing, but, uh, we're, we're, uh, kinda captured as well, where we can't do, do things that we would like to do. Cities have more authority, they're, they're their own entity, but they're part of the state government, and they're not allowing us to do a lot of these things.
I'd like to add one more to that, uh-
Thank you.
As long as they are, while they turn in their flat, uh, fees request, they're in the ETJ of the City of College Station. Once, we're both reviewing it, everything at the same time. Once they give their approval, we don't have power. Commissioner's Court don't have the power to deny that. The other thing, in answering your talk and discussion, we're scheduled to meet at three thirty tomorrow with the city manager and the city engineers from City of College Station. And it's, time limit is till finish. And this is what we're gonna be addressing with those people, why there's such a delay on the Indian Lakes Drive extension to Cherokee, which is our rule, and which we want to improve and make a connection, and the Mesa Verde extension. So, we're actually, we're gonna be addressing all of that tomorrow. And hopefully, it's gonna be a good outcome of that. That's reasoning. We told you last week we're gonna schedule that as quick as we could. That is taking place tomorrow afternoon.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I'll leave you on your next step.
I will leave you.
Okay, I think we've got a motion and a second to approve that plot. There's no more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Number eighteen is tax refund application for the following.
I have a motion that we accept and approve, uh, applications A through T S and Tom.
Motion made second to approve, uh, A through T. No more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Number nineteen is budget amendments. Budget amendments FY fifteen slash sixteen, twenty-six point one through twenty-six point ten. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discuss. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. They'll change the status. Motion made second to discuss. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Number twenty-one is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Brass County. Claim number seven one four two six zero eight. Your claim number seven one four two eight two four. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discuss. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number, we'll skip down to number twenty-four. Sheriff's report on inmate population. Sheriff.
Right, Judge. Good morning, Commissioner. Uh, five hundred and eighty-three is our peak in the last twenty-four hours. We have forty-three with ankle monitors, and fourteen are pending.
Okay. Thanks, Sheriff. Number twenty-five is announced with the nature status and the possible future agenda topics. Twenty-six is call for citizens' input and/or concerns. Let's go back to, to number twenty-two, and being an executive session, some of the Texas government code five five one point zero seven eight five. Deliver the rush of Bobby medical and psychiatric, correctors of a county employee in Texas government code five five one point zero seven four to discuss personnel matters. Uh, only court candy legal, Jennifer, is Laura in here? Laura, is she okay? Laura, uh, Jenny Katie, Amy here. And the time is ten forty-two.
Did you say Amy or anybody?
Thank you.
Alright, you're welcome.
Another layer of problem.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, easy, every second.
Yeah.
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 Yeah.